Yeah.
Okay, okay. I think we're ready then. And Sue, you're here, right?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. The meeting is now called to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlheim?
Present.
Mrs. Gensinger?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Present.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board, and mailing a copy of same to the press in the Cape County Herald on April 16th, 2020. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start today's work session with Administration and Finance. Mr. Craftcheck?
Thank you, Mayor. Like to start out the Administration and Finance portion of the work session by turning it over to our engineer, Mark de Blasio.
Thank you. I'm going to start off first with a grant application update. So the first one is the Borough's Fiscal Year 2021 NJDOT Grant Application for the Reconstruction of 83rd Street was successfully submitted to the state on May 6th. Under normal circumstances, the DOT and state make decisions on these applications usually at the end of the year. And hopefully they will continue that pattern and we have another positive result. A second item is in regard to the 2020 Cape County Open Space Grant Application. We have submitted our proposal to prepare and submit this application on May 26th. Just to refresh everyone's memory, open space application that is a coastal enhancement for additional grant funds that I believe that the Borough is considering the Bayside Marina. Again, to reiterate with everything going on with the virus, et cetera, the application deadlines were pushed back to August 15th and December 15th of this year. So we can start to deliberate if you would like to submit an application or not. I'm going to move along to capital projects. The following capital projects have been successfully completed or in the project closeout phase at this point. They are the 94th and 114th Street Bulkhead Replacement and the Beach ADA Ramp Replacement. Both projects were successfully completed and contractors did a nice job. I'm going to move on to give you an update on the 2019 Road Program and the 94th Street Sanitary Sewer Pump Station. I'm going to share with you a project location map that'll help better graphically show the project update. So I'm going to share a screen with you. Just share with me for a minute. Okay, hopefully everyone sees the first screen here. This is an update on where we are with our 2019 Utility and Road Program. We tried to color code it to make it easier to understand. There was a lot of work that was accomplished in the Borough this past spring. So the contractor for this project, I'm going to start from the south side and move north of the north. Streets that were completed are shown in red. So the contractor completed the 105th Street, 90th Street, ADA Street, and 87th Street roadways. Contractors demobilizing for the summer, coming back in the fall to complete the streets that are shown in blue. They are 118th Street, 91st Street, and 89th Street. As you may recall, this is the same contractor who was working on the 94th Street Pump Station, which is a good segue. I'm going to take this screen off and show you the 94th Street Pump Station project location map. Okay, so here is an update, a graphical update on the 94th Street Sanitary Sewer Pump Station project. This was kind of split into two projects. One is the underground utility portion and the second, the wet well and pump station portion. So what you see in red was completed and navigated successfully this past spring. We had the water main completed on Third Avenue and 94th Street. We had the sanitary sewer successfully installed and forced main along 94th Street all the way back into the parking lot, ready to accept the sanitary sewer pump station. The contractor is currently working on the project site, which is kind of is shown in blue. So they are onsite, also staging the parking lot. The contractor at this point has installed the sheeting to install the wet well. And the wet well is scheduled to arrive within two weeks and then that process will be started with the wet well installation, which is about a 30-foot excavation. Once that wet well is excavated, we are supposed to have a prefabricated building show up at the end of June. That will allow the contractor to install the building foundation, the building itself, install the pumps, all the accoutrements that would go with the pump station. Hopefully that work will be completed between now and September. Bearing any unforeseen problems, the contractor is going to remobilize into the Borough in the fall to install the final portion of the project, which is the underground piece shown in green. That will install sanitary sewer down 93rd Street, down Third Avenue, and tie in at this point, that will put the Borough in position to essentially flip the switch, turn on the new pump station. Hopefully everything operates well and we get all the kinks worked out. And then you will be in a position to decommission your existing sanitary sewer pump station and be ready to accept your storm sewer pump station being designed by Matt McDonald. The last item that I have, and I'll stop sharing the screen, is that the NJDEP CAF for permit application for the new Beach Patrol Building was submitted to DEP on May 5th. So we'll be working with the DEP to address any other comments, et cetera. And we'll be working towards getting you a permit as quickly as possible. That is my report.
Thank you, Mark. Does anyone have any questions for Mark?
I do. Mark, just one question. We've been asked a couple of times how much equipment is going to remain at the 94th Street and Second Avenue parking lot over the summer and so on and so forth. So can you just give us some kind of indication as to what parking is going to remain available there?
I think, I think the situation that you see out there right now is I think half of the parking lot is inaccessible and the one side where you can access it is one-way. I think you're going to see that stay like that until the middle of July at the minimum. What we, what we can do is we can ask the contractor if he will be in a position or feels comfortable opening up the parking lot. Because once the wet well goes in, they're going to have to crane in a building and then pick that building up and crane it over and install it. Maybe at that point, we could look at giving the Borough back the parking lot, but I would want to confer with them. So I would say conservatively, you're probably going to lose the parking lot at least through July.
And when you say lose the parking lot, you mean in its entirety?
In its entirety, probably in its entirety because we can't, if, if the entranceway was two-way on 93rd Street, it might be a little bit easier to do that. But what we can do, if you'd like, we can work with the contractor to see if it's feasible to open it up sooner than later.
Okay. All right. Anything that you could do would be helpful, but you know, we don't want to impede the, the project. And it's just a question that we've been getting.
Okay. Yeah, just, and just in summary, that project has gone very well. We're pleased with the progress. The quality of, quality of work, we've hit our deadlines. So, so far, so good.
Hey, Mark, at three, can you also just clarify the, the status of the charging station?
So the charging station, I believe, was taken offline to provide power for the watering operation. I believe that that the watering operation will be completed probably by the end of this month as well. So you'll get that back at some point late June.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I may make the comment to Mr. de Blasio that that was an excellent presentation. I could follow everything that you were saying. It was comprehensive and thorough. And I appreciate all your hard work on this. And this format is excellent for the presentation like the one that Mr. de Blasio just made. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for the compliment.
I would just like to add that it does, it does really seem, I, you know, I'm familiar with other municipalities and how these types of projects proceed and some of the obvious and some of the not-so-obvious pitfalls. And I got to say, this is, this is remarkably smooth. And I can say I'm very happy and pleased with the progress here. And again, thank you for your work, Mark. I don't know if anyone else has any questions.
Thank you.
Hearing none, I will move on to our next portion, which will be Debbie Candalora, our tax collector. Debbie, you're all set to take the floor.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So I have a report on, an update on the estimated tolls. I'm expecting them to arrive next week, which is the earliest our tax bills have ever gone out. So that's good news. What does happen when we do estimated tax bills is in August, well, in June, when they are mailed out, you are only going to receive one stub and that will be for the August installment. When the rates are certified at the end of the summer, early September, you will receive a reconciled tax bill with the November stub and the preliminary of 2021. Our extended grace period ended yesterday and delinquent notices were mailed out today. The utility bills were mailed in May and they're due June 1st with a 30-day grace. We're working on month-end reports and that concludes my report unless anyone has any questions. Questions?
I don't. Anyone else?
Thank you very much for your report. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. So moving on, our tax assessor will not be reporting this evening. So I will move on to construction and zoning, Ray Poudria. And he will cover his normal activities as well as introduce our new code enforcement officer. Ray?
Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you all face-to-face up in the courtroom one day. But as long as we're doing this, the approximately, the beginning of last month, the governor stopped allowing us to take permits. I had reported in the previous month that we were still taking permits in the construction office, but we had to stop. So our revenues are down still more than 50%. We were ahead compared to some other towns because I had been taking permits up to that point till I was told I couldn't. So since then, we are back opened up full and taking permits in and they're coming in rather rapidly and people are wanting their homes closed. So the construction office is very busy with inspections. And as Charles noted, we had hired a new code enforcement officer. His name is Paul Imhoff. He is in the meeting right now. I would like to have him unmuted and you can all meet him person-to-person, give you a brief description of his experience, if that's possible. Okay, Kim, you might have to unmute Paul.
I think I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are. Yes.
First, let me just say, in my short few weeks that I've, a couple of weeks that I've been here, I love the job. I love working with the people there and it's quite an interesting town to, to work in. I previously worked in Wildwood doing pretty much the same things as far as code enforcement is concerned, and it's totally different. It's like night and day. I really feel comfortable here already and I'm looking forward to assisting the Borough and moving forward with anything that we need to do in the future.
It's a pleasure to meet you, Paul. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome to Stone Harbor, Paul.
Yes, welcome to Stone Harbor too. I've heard compliments already about you.
Well, that's good.
You mentioned points of difference. What are the points of difference that you've experienced in Stone Harbor compared to Wildwood?
It's pretty much the residents. It's, it's a whole different clientele. Stone Harbor seems to be a little more, what I would say uppity, more money with people that live here as far as the value of their homes and the way they keep their homes, their appearance of their homes. Wildwood still has a long way to go when it comes to that. Of course, the, the price load is definitely different between the homes here in Stone Harbor versus in Wildwood. So it's, I think it's a much nicer clientele to work with in, in Stone Harbor because the people want to keep their places nice. And if you have a suggestion or tell them an ordinance that they need to follow, I haven't had any problem with anybody yet give me a hard time with any of that. So I'm very pleased.
Very good. Good to hear. Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions for me at this time?
I do not.
I don't. But I'll just add, it was a pleasure to meet Paul in person from 10 feet away and looking forward to having you aboard. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if that's all for Ray, we can move on to our Borough Clerk.
Okay, I'm going to give the clerk's report for the month of May. We had six boat trailers, 103 kayak permits, 25 parking permits, six boat slips, 74 business registrations, two Oprah requests, four sale craft permits, one amusement license, and one beach concession for a total of $50,860.20. I also want everyone to know that I have three boat slips still open if anybody's interested.
So how would that, those figures compare with, say, last year?
I think pretty much the same. Even though we've been closed, a lot of people have managed to get everything in and get everything in on time. They've been really good about it.
Okay, any other questions for Sue? Hearing none, I think we can move on to our CFO, Jim Craft. Do we have Jim here?
Doesn't look like he has sound.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim. You're good.
Okay, sorry about that. And next week, the orders will be started in the 2019 audit next week. And Kate has been up helping us in the, in the, doing accounts payable and payroll. She's doing a great job. We have our summer intern Kyle also helping us out and we're moving along. And that's, that's all I have to report.
Jim, how is the auditor going to be conducting that audit this year?
So we're going to put them in the upstairs meeting room. And they will, you know, wear face protection and, and they'll give us a list of things that they need. And I'll reach out to the different departments ahead of time to try to minimize contact.
Okay. Good, okay. And how long does it usually take, Kim? Two days, a day?
It's about three weeks.
Excuse me?
About three weeks to do.
Oh, three weeks of every day?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't realize it was that long. Okay.
Any other questions for Jim? Hearing none, we can move on with Mr. Smith, our Borough Administrator. You can take it over from here.
Actually, I have no formal report tonight.
Okay, thank you. That concludes A and F. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we're going to move on to Public Works. Mr. Parsick?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, before I hand this off to the Public Works Director to go over the details in his monthly report. I, I talked to Grant yesterday and he's asking us for one favor from us and the general public that we please show some patience with Public Works as we move forward. I mean, they've been impacted by COVID-19 as, as badly, if not worse, than all the other employees in town and the merchants and, and whatnot. And they're trying to get it all done as best they can. They're not fully staffed yet, either with full-time employees or with their seasonal staff. So they're just asking that the public exercise a little bit of patience. They will get it all done. They not happen as quickly as it has in the past. But they're on the job and working hard. So with that, I'll turn it over to Grant.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Just a few things I'd like to update you on in the public. Our Buildings Department is preparing Borough Hall for, for their office spaces for separation from the public, installing screening barriers and cleaning their, their offices and trying to keep everything sanitized in, in the building. They have also installed all the concession stands on the beach, which are prepared to open as soon as the vendor is ready. Our Grants Department has installed all the urns and hanging baskets and continue to maintain the Borough properties. Our Beaches and Streets Department have all the parking meters and kiosses in as well as at the Marina. So they're all up and running. So make sure that you pay the meters. All of our beach access ramps have been impacted by the heavy winds that we've been seeing over the last couple of weeks. We are doing our best to try to clear them out and groom them to where we usually have them for the summer. And they're also working on getting all the ADA mats out at all the locations that have those ramps. Solid Waste is still working on the winter schedule. Residents don't need to call us at this time, but we will be checking every home on Monday, Wednesday, and on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday will be their, the routes, just like we do during the wintertime. So that's about all I have right now. We are starting to see more in summer seasonal guys coming in to fill out applications. So I'm hoping within the next two weeks, we are fully manned. And that's all I have for Public Works.
Anyone have any questions? That's it for us, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll move right into Utilities. There, Grant. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had our last Utilities Committee meeting on Wednesday, May the 27th. And at that meeting, we discussed the, our priorities for the year, the status of those priorities, as well as the approved capital expenditures. And one of the largest capital expenditures, as Mark de Blasio mentioned, is the pump station on 94th Street going along exceedingly well. So glad to report that's on, on schedule and, and on cost. Unless, unless, Grant, you have anything else to add? Just also mentioned that our next meeting is on Monday, June the 8th.
I just have one more thing. We did hydrant flushing over the last couple of days and I thought they would be done by the end of the week. They actually are done as of today. We pumped 333,000 gallons of water to clear our stagnant lines, get them ready for the season. So that, that report will be going to the Utilities Clerk so she can put it on her, on her files for unexplained use of water. Very good. Thank you. I think that's it, unless someone has any questions. Just one other thing. We were on a, we were on a split shift with our, our utilities. We had them split into two different weeks that would, they would come in and we are fully staffed now. So all the construction projects that the Construction Office talked about for new installations will not be delayed. Fingers crossed. Good to hear. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Grant. Anybody have any questions for any of those three committees, any council members for Administration, Finance, Public Works, or Utility before we move on to discussion?
Can we have a conversation with Tom Shutter and talk about what's going on up in Ocean City and Summers Point with the move on to people?
We can, we can do that in the council meeting under the OEM report. At the end of the council meeting, we can do that. He was not on the meeting a little bit ago. I'm not sure if he's joined us yet. But yeah, we can have, let's do, let's do that in the council meeting and then it also becomes available for public comment too.
Okay, thank you.
So we've got two items of discussion. The first one would be the logistics of the outdoor dining, the, the procedure for how, how the restaurants will apply for that. And I think everybody got those documents somewhat late, pretty recently, maybe within the last hour or so in their email. I'm not sure when they went out. No, Josie, you have a face. Did you get them or no? Yes, okay. Okay, so people should have in front of them, council should have in front of them, the documents that we received from the JIF and Ray Poudria is going to talk about how he's going to handle this process.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have, from the JIF, we have a two-page application that the Borough has put there. We put our logo on. And that's the application for the use of the public right of way. With that application, I will be sending, I've done a sample layout for the restaurants to give us that prefer to do the outdoor dining. And we have a checklist that we've taken right out of our ordinance from section, where was it? Yeah, section 380-6 is application and information to be provided. So we'll give them that checklist. I've done the sample and then we have made up blanks for them. And then the second part of that application is the use of the public right of way payment, which has the insurance schedule, the indemnification, and releasing the the municipality from liabilities. Okay? So it's basically eight pages of the Borough's application. Four for the, four for the indemnification and two for the actual application and then two are an explanation. Okay, then I spoke to Leslie Germani today and for any restaurants that are in the public right of way for the county, she has an application as well. Rather than get into everything in detail here, I spoke with Maggie Day and we are going to set up a Zoom meeting very similar to this with all the restaurants who may be interested in participating in the outdoor dining. We'll get, get that information out to them through the chamber, hopefully within the next couple of days. And I would ask any of the restaurants that may be viewing this, that they wait till after that meeting if they have questions because they may be answered that meeting. Because right now, it's just Suzanne and I full-time in this construction office and we're trying to get construction projects completed and such. So we'll set up that meeting and then hopefully we can So we'll set up that meeting, and then hopefully we can go through in detail the application process to all the restaurants. Okay? And I guess that's it. As everybody knows, yesterday, the Governor had announced that June 15th, he would be releasing the outdoor dining. So hopefully, that gives us two weeks to hopefully get all of the applications processed and ready to go. I would like to see the restaurants able to open up as soon as possible, as close to the date that we're allowed to as possible.
And Ray, I would suggest that you tape, when you do that meeting, that we tape it. So if for any reason someone is unable to be a part of it, the Chamber can share that taped meeting and share the information.
Okay, that sounds good. I'll go get with Kim Stevenson on that.
I have a question.
What is it?
If I may ask, so the Governor gave the date of May 15th. Do the Governor's orders supersede all other orders, and therefore we, if I understand you correctly, we are good to go on May 15th, and we'll be dining outside?
June 15th. The date is June 15th, but the Borough can add to the
Sorry about that.
Can't take away. But, and I'm not sure about the 20-day, if the ordinance becomes effective today, I'm not sure if there's still a 20-day wait period, or if that date on the June 15th, we can go ahead. That would be a question for Marcus Caravan.
You would be on? Yes, I am. With the ordinance adopted today, the Borough can relax those regulations and proceed on the 15th.
And then anybody who was already set up for outdoor dining, if they meet with whatever the protocols are, they'll, some places are not going to need this additional relief, and they've got outdoor dining and could just simply begin on the 15th, for example, being the Reed's or Burger Bar, as long as they're complying with whatever protocols are put in place.
What about other restaurants?
Can we get a definition of what is public right of way?
Anything not owned by the business owner, that belongs to the Borough.
Right, that would be the sidewalks, the streets.
I guess I'm a little confused. When I look at the ordinance itself, there is a statement in several places about a six-foot pathway that cannot be obstructed. And I'm just curious how, who is going to determine that six-foot pathway?
So that would be, that would be determined by Ray when he outlines the original site plan with the owner. The owner is going to apply. There's a series of documents that are signed by the JIF to assure us of indemnification insurance, et cetera. But in addition to that, there's going to be a schematic, if you will, or a graphic drawing. It's not going to be architectural, but there'll be a drawing that Ray agrees upon with the owner as to where the tables will be laid out so that he can make sure that access remains.
I have a question, too, because I'm a little confused, too. The curb, between the curb and the sidewalk, let's just say, pretty much any place in town, that belongs to the Borough, correct? That is not the right of way.
It is a public right of way, correct?
Where the benches are?
Yes.
That is called a right of way?
Yes, it's the Borough-owned property is the right of way, and we have elected to put benches in some of those areas.
So that's where the tables will be going?
The tables will be going. It's going to be a case-by-case basis, as these are submitted to Ray, and he agrees upon them. In other words, each individual applicant is going to submit, and depending upon the specific geographics or the specific configuration of their area, Ray is going to design and agree with them where the tables may be placed.
Right.
Mark? The spot where the benches are, and light poles, and trash cans, and recycling containers, they have to show that on their diagram. When they present a diagram to me, if there is Borough property in the right of way, they have to show where that is and show the six-foot path around that. And then from there towards their structure, that's where they will be setting their tables. For the most part, because the right of way, the pathway for the pedestrian traffic cannot be more than a 2% incline, per the way the ordinance is written. So most of the restaurants or buildings that have a slope from the front down, that can't be where they set up the pedestrian path, pedestrian traffic. The pedestrian traffic has to be in the flatter terrain, the more accessible terrain. So, and that's all going to be part of the diagram that they present to me. And I will be going over some of them that, well, the Chief of Police, Tom Shutter, and I, and Roger Stanford, all will be looking at any of these that do not, that I may have questions on. I will be addressing with the two cheats.
Any other questions for Ray on this discussion item in general?
Frank is talking, and we're not picking up his microphone.
Frank, we cannot hear you.
Frank, you have to unmute. Almost.
There you go.
I guess my question is, who gets to make the final decision on the satisfactory, satisfactorily, design of the layout?
So that would be Ray.
And if he disapproves something, what happens then?
Well, they have to, he's going to confer with the police chief and the fire chief, and if there's not a consensus and he doesn't approve it, it doesn't get, doesn't move forward along that guideline. It'll have to be modified until it's in the state that he approves.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a technical question on our ordinance, because we have it up for adoption tonight. The May 5th ordinance that we had, or that I had in my Dropbox, referred to the word sidewalk dining. The one that I have now for tonight, everywhere it said sidewalk, it now says outdoor. Does that make a difference?
I think there was some minor modification to it. I did not do it, but between sidewalk and outdoor is really, you know, not a significant modification that would hold that up.
I have a question regarding the tables. Are they required to be carried inside at nighttime?
The way the ordinance is written, it's just out of view. It doesn't necessarily say be inside, but it's out of the public view at nighttime. After 10, I think it's 12. They gotta stop, they have to stop dining at 10, and then they have till 12 to clean up the area and put the tables, yes, out of public view.
What about restaurants that are outside of the downtown business district? I'm thinking of Donna's Place down at 109th Street and the restaurant that was up at around 80th Street.
Both, both of those restaurants already have outdoor dining available to them without this ordinance. They have already been approved for that, through their charter or something, prior to this ordinance.
So the application of alcohol to that is, that goes without saying?
I'm not following the application. They have to have the
The way I read the, the way I read the ordinance, it was very specific about saying restaurants in the downtown area. We're talking about the approval of serving alcoholic beverages.
No, I think it, I believe the alcohol part is, if you, you can openly, you can publicly consume alcohol while seated if where you're at has an approved application. So in order to have the approved application, you're going to be
You have to have a liquor license to do that.
No, because there's a BYOBs.
Oh, the, with the BYOB is a different story.
The areas that Frank is referring
That's for consumption, but these places that do not have a liquor license would not be able to sell the alcohol at the point of vending.
Right, but it could be consumed if brought with them.
Yes, on a BYOB basis.
Okay, good.
I just have a couple quick, since we're going to do the final reading on this at the regular meeting. So this whole evolution has, I've asked this before, but from what I heard earlier, it's been cleared through JIF. JIF's on board with this, right, Marcus?
I have spoken with Dave DeWes, indicated what we wanted to do. He indicated that if we use the JIF format, which he has sent over, they would be on board with it. In addition, we would be named as additional insurers on the liability policies for the premises that have alcohol service.
Okay, and the second question, we were just talking about, you were just speaking about BYOB, and so was the mayor. Is our restaurants that do BYOB, do they have some kind of a permit or license from the Borough or something that allows them to do that?
You, what you, you're muted, Ray.
Well, what I'm saying, can you hear me?
Yes. Your question was, do they have a special license from the Borough? I believe it's just permissive within the, with the ordinance scheme of the Borough to allow that. Like, some places restricted, like Ocean City, where they don't have, they don't permit BYOB. That hasn't been the case in Stone Harbor.
Okay, so then, when this is enacted, any, then any restaurant, Uncle Bill's Pancake House, you can take a beer in there and sit outside, and is that right? There's no, anybody that's serving food, people can bring alcohol to it?
I would say that there is no distinction, although I don't know how many people are going to be drinking with their pancakes, but maybe there will be a few.
But it's going to be, then it's going to be different, right? And that's all I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand.
It will be different in the sense that we are relaxing that open display. So yes, it will be different, because ordinarily, they would not have been allowed to do that, because we have an ordinance that prohibits consumption in the public areas, and we are relaxing that for this period of time.
And I think, Ray, is what you, so in other words, you're saying, you're saying Uncle Bill's right now, can they be a BYOB? Is that your question? Existing as is? Without outdoor dining, do they have the same parameters? Yes?
I, no, I understand that. All I was trying to get, is there some Borough ordinance or regulation or permit or something, and the answer is no, right?
No, right. There's no, right, there's no exclusion of BYOBs. There's no restriction or exclusion.
But you can bring BYOB to any place inside that has food?
Anywhere that allows it. It's private property. They may tell you they don't want it in there on their property, but as long as you're on their private property, it's
Okay, all right. I understand what you're saying. I wasn't aware that that's how the BYOB work. But one last thing is, I think in the ordinance itself, and that some of those lengthy checklists, we talk about the applicant having to explain to Ray the impact to adjacent properties. And I would think that in this whole mechanism, there should be some way that we notify these adjacent businesses that, much like you do with construction, if you're, if you're going to do something within 200 feet of somebody, that we let them know and give them a chance to comment, as opposed to letting the restaurant owner tell you what the impact's going to be. Let the owner of the adjacent property tell you what he thinks the impact's going to be.
Thoughts on that? That would require, I would imagine, we'd have to put some kind of a range, and we would have to, we would require, I would imagine, a certified letter. And I don't, I just don't know if this is the time to do it that way, that perhaps, as we've said, we need to get rolling on this and not throw yet another impediment in front of businesses that are already really getting beat up. And if we see after this summer that there were some unforeseen circumstances, we have all winter to fix that, to introduce an ordinance and make it right. But I think if we now add that on top of it, and then we have Ray waiting for letters to come in, and then we have more weighing in going on, it's going to take a long time to get this started, and I just don't know how fair that is to businesses that are already getting clobbered.
You're absolutely right. I agree with you. It's too late to do that, but it is a consideration going forward. That's all.
Yes, and consideration 100% going forward, and we've already, you know, a couple of things have, we've already thought of that perhaps, because we don't want to reintroduce and go out another four weeks, would be having some sort of a delineation for next year.
I would submit to Council that this is going to be a work in progress somewhat, and that as you go through and have little issues present themselves, you will be able to tweak this and refine it. But the good thing is, you're not bound to this indefinitely, and you do have a chance to revisit it periodically.
And just for clarification, Ray, the forms that we have, Ray Poudria, the forms we have came from the JIF, correct?
Yes, yes, they did. They have the exact forms that we presented, and we just put our letterhead and logo on them.
Okay. Any other questions for Ray for the procedure? Anything for Marcus?
Ray, just a
As a solicitor?
Ray, just a quick question is, how are the restaurant owners going to have access to the forms itself?
I'm glad you brought that up. I meant, we are going to have them on the website. Probably within the next day or two, I have them set for Kim to go on to the Borough
The only other item that I'd like to bring up here is, we mentioned checklist, and perhaps there should be a catch-all clause that the applicant is agreeing to abide by not only the terms of our new ordinance, but also any executive order that stands in place, because my understanding is that will supersede our ordinance, at least for the time at which it's in effect and remains in effect. Mark, do you think that's something we should have in there?
I don't know that you need to add that, because it's implicit upon them to comply with that. If it's an executive order that is more exclusionary that should come out, then the applicant would be governed by that, and the Borough could enforce it.
Anybody else have anything?
I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Poudria. This is in very capable hands and very thoughtful and conscientious. He put a lot of work into this. These are changing times for you. There's a lot of extra work in your office, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
I'll second those comments and just add, I know there's concern. Mr. Parsick mentioned neighboring properties. It's been my experience speaking with business owners, restaurant owners around town, that not only do the restaurants overwhelmingly support it, but adjacent properties are actually in favor of, but not only to help and support their neighboring restaurant, but also to help and support traffic flow for the other businesses. I think this is a wonderful thing. I think it, I think it is long, long, long overdue, and I look forward to seeing the implementation of it, and I want to thank Ray. And I think it goes without saying Suzanne Brown in that office as well fields a lot, will be fielding a lot of these calls, in addition to the overwhelming amount of work they have on their plate already. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for
You're welcome. Thank you for.
Myself. Anyone else? Anything left on this item? And then we will be having in the regular council meeting, there will be a public hearing on the second, third, and final reading of the ordinance, so the public can weigh in as well. So moving on to second item on the agenda, temporary outdoor retail sales. So what that is, is a request, it's a special event request from the chamber to allow outdoor retail sales on their private property, not in the right of way, and against their building of a rack or a table just until June 15th, until they can actually have patrons in their brick and mortar store. So where did this come from? I don't know how many of you are aware, but neighboring communities are issuing executive orders, mayoral executive orders, or passing resolutions to allow this type of relief to their businesses. In reviewing our ordinance that prohibits the sale of retail items on the sidewalk, the, the exception is with a special event permit issued by the borough for such things as bazaars, festivals, sidewalk sales, backyard sales, food sales, boat shows, art shows, craft shows, and so on, similar, and then it ends with, and similar activities approved by mayor and council upon written application. So we have received the written application from the chamber. Now, the goal here is to provide some relief for the next two weeks until that governor's order kicks in. One of the things, in order to keep the congestion down on, throughout the business district, this relief is only going to be afforded to those stores who fell under the category of non-essential, which means they have been closed since whatever that date was, March 12th, March 17th, I cannot remember the date, whatever that date was. So if you were deemed an essential business, and you've been allowed to conduct business, and you've been permitted to have people in your brick and mortar throughout this pandemic, then you are not one of those folks who would be permitted to have things outside of your store. This, the goal of this is to provide relief for those who need it most, those who had the forced closure. So what has been submitted is, I believe it's 13 days, it would go from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM daily. There's a couple of caveats that must be followed, that you'll see in Appendix A, which it basically, that is all the COVID-19 restrictions that are in place when you are open, as well as we are requiring that if anybody is looking at your merchandise, they have to be masked even though they are outside. It's going to be required that they wear a mask while they're looking at your merchandise and conducting business with you. And the other thing we are requiring is there has to be supervision of the items outside at all times. What we want to avoid is somebody who is looking through a rack, and then somebody else walks up, and now you've got folks that don't know one another, and they're not masked, and nobody is supervising that activity. So we want to have somebody who is outside with that rack at all times, making sure that social distancing is maintained, and making sure that face coverings are being used. This was done, the chief of police did look at this, he did weigh in on it. It will, there will be no patron access to the store because that is still prohibited until June 15th. Everything has to come in at night. Nothing can stay out overnight. Any questions, observations? We have received an insurance certificate from the Chamber of Commerce that covers us through June 30th as an additional insured through the Chamber's insurance. When, what we would need to do is make a motion in the regular meeting to approve this, and it would become effective tomorrow morning. And along with that motion, I would like to include that the fees be waived because I believe that the chamber has been hit very hard as is, and it would be, I think it's incumbent upon us to do what we can to help them get back on their feet and to get through this summer, and God knows what the fall is going to bring. And I believe when we tallied up the fees, it was somewhere like $3,000, which I would like whoever brings this motion forward to also include in that motion that application, all application fees be waived.
Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to bring that motion forward. Drastic times call for drastic measures. I think this is more than warranted, given the circumstances, and I couldn't concur more on waiving those fees. This, these people, I, I could never sit here and, and say in good conscience that they should be held to, held back from offering their items. And, you know, we're, we're starting to move forward and open up here, and we should afford them this opportunity. The summer's here, we only have so long. We should definitely move forward with this.
Mayor, I have a question. Does this only, is this Appendix A mean that only chamber members can do this?
Yes, it is a Chamber of Commerce application, special application, special event application, which is the caveat that our ordinance allows.
Okay, so anyone who is not a chamber member cannot put their merchandise outside?
They would not be, the same as the sidewalk sale. They're, they're not afforded that same opportunity during the sidewalk sale either. If that is something the council wants to entertain, to, to make this a broad spectrum, one of the issues we're going to face there, though, is perhaps we would have to require personal insurance from those who are not members of the chamber.
That's exactly the issue. And if we were to contemplate that, that should certainly be one of the, one of the requirements.
I mean, that is something we can add, if, if we wanted to add that umbrella and see, and then those particular stores provide the borough with insurance, and they would be permitted in their own, you know, as, we could make it an umbrella, so to speak. However, we do require the insurance with a special event application, and not being a member of the chamber, it means they would not be covered by that insurance, so we would have to get that. But that is certainly something, again, that if council would like to move forward with, we can vote on that at the meeting as well. Any more thoughts on that in general?
Yeah, I just have a question as far as space. Typically, when we have the sidewalk sales, the 96th Street is, is closed. And I know we've talked about that at the last council meeting. Is that something that we would want to consider, you know, with this, with this change?
I don't think we do close 96th Street for the sidewalk sale, Reese.
Correct, we do not.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thanks for clarifying.
But your question is still a good one.
And what we're doing differently than the sidewalk sale here to minimize the, the crowding that you see in the sidewalk sale, the sidewalk sale, you can have things in the right of way. You cannot for this. And you also, if you are an essential business, you cannot put things out either. So some of that crowding is going to be diminished as a result of, of those two differences from the sidewalk sale.
Okay, very good. Thank you for clarifying.
And I think as far as the closing of 96th Street, and I guess that's, you know, that's, that's a question for everybody, how you feel about the feedback coming from the chamber is it seems, you know, once it's all fleshed out, that it's, it's not the best idea, and not in the best interest of all. Just seems to be that, that's the flavor that I'm getting from the discussion with the chamber members.
Mayor, do we know how many of the Chamber of Commerce members are in agreement with this notion?
I would imagine all of them, because they are all ready to do some business. And I, I can't actually answer that question. We can ask the chamber president that question in the regular meeting. Anything else on this?
So I have.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
I just wanted to say that I wholeheartedly support, support this effort by the Chamber of Commerce. I think it's an innovative solution to challenging environment that's an economic tsunami for our businesses. My heart goes out to each and every one of them. They're my friends, they're my neighbors, they're our constituents that put us in office. And this is a hand up, it's not a handout. I think it's the least we can do. And I also just want to say to everyone who's here, we all have a role in this to support our local community and to support all our businesses. We have a beautiful downtown, it's eclectic, it's interesting, and we want to keep it. So just please remember that, everyone, we need to support our downtown.
I think we should be going after the governor to open up the stores. This is crazy to let these guys continue to be closed for this, for another two weeks. For 13 days, we're going to go through this, this program? It doesn't make any sense to me. The stores should be allowed to be open as long as people are social distancing and face masks and all that business.
I don't disagree with you, Frank. However, we are under an executive order, and our police have to enforce those executive orders. And as long as those executive orders are in place, we have to follow them. And as far as going after the governor, that's, it's non-stop going after the governor. It's banging, everyone's banging their head against a wall on this. You see it, lawsuits are being filed, so on and so forth. And if we can just get any bit of relief for the businesses, this is something we can do.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that. I just think that this whole business with the governor's lack of common sense in dealing with this situation is, is awful, just awful.
Currently, to my knowledge, there are three federal lawsuits lodged against the governor, and there is one in state court here in Cape May County that is going to be heard by a special panel of the appellate division. And I suspect that you will see more lawsuits filed. So there is no shortage of people going after the governor, but thus far, he has been unrelenting.
Good way to put it, unrelenting.
It was my understanding that the legislature makes laws, not the governor.
The legislature proposed, so, all right, let me digress for a minute. Some states have legislation in place that indicates that after 28 days or some comparable period, an executive order issued by the governor is subject to the review of the legislature, and unless they renew it, it expires. New Jersey does not have such a restriction. There was a proposal to implement it. Frankly, I don't believe that the assembly has moved forward on that. You are generally correct. It is the legislature that makes the orders, except in times of emergency, when the governor has special powers to issue executive orders.
Anything else on the special event application?
Mayor, real quickly.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention that if there is a desire to change and to expand the vendors that would be eligible under this permit, we're probably going to have to tinker with or change some of the certification language at the, the end of Appendix A that Matt's certifying to. So I just wanted to raise that issue, if it is a desire of the council. And if we get to that point, I can modify that language. I don't think it exactly fits if we have vendors and merchants outside of the chamber participating under this permit.
Okay. And Marcus, is that something that if we modified during, you know, when we get to the motion, that it would be approved subsequent to blah, blah, blah? That would be something?
If you want to indicate that you want to expand the relief that you're going to be granting, subject to certain additional conditions, to additional classes of merchants, you can do that.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Anything else on either item of discussion? Okay. What we're going to do then, we go into adjourn, and then we'll move right into the council meeting. I will make sure I covered everything. Yes. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Back.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Shift your paperwork. Council meeting is going to begin. The meeting is now called to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dallahan?
Here.
Mrs. Gensner?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
President.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on April 16th, 2020. And for the record, this council meeting was held via video telephone conference and a Zoom platform. Everyone's remaining muted, and just be cognizant of that feature moving forward. And again, will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, do we have any communications?
Yes, Mayor, I have one letter that has asked to be read into the record. It's from Clinton Bunting, Principal Partner of Town Square Entertainment. Dear Mayor Judy Davies-Dunhour, I want to inform you of an incident that occurred last Friday, May 22nd, 2020, at our Harper Square Theater. For background information, the theater needed emergency electric work on the rear of the building facing 97th Street. The electrical wires were pulling off the building, creating both a physical danger of falling on someone and a fire hazard. Our licensed electrical contractor, Higher Power, submitted and received permitted approval to perform the work. He coordinated with Atlantic City Electric to connect and repower the theater on Friday, May 22nd, 2020. Atlantic City Electric arrived and began the necessary work that morning. After beginning the work, Councilman Rich approached Atlantic City Electric employees, identifying herself as a city councilwoman, and instructed them they could not do the work. Subsequently, Atlantic City Electric communicated to Higher Power that they were leaving until the matter was fixed. We received a call that this had occurred, and we called the Borough of Stone Harbor Administrator and the permitting office. We were informed that Councilman Rich had no authority to force Atlantic Electric to leave, and that we received the proper permits to perform the work. Additionally, Ray Poutier visited the site and confirmed that we were following the proper procedures. We attempted to get Atlantic City Electric to return, but they said they would not come back until Tuesday, May 26th, 2020. The action by Councilwoman Rich resulted in both creating a fire and a safety hazard for the theater. Specifically, our fire suppression system is connected to the electric, resulting in our property being at risk for three days. Additionally, our projectors were at risk of being damaged due to the lack of electricity. And lastly, the front of the building was dark, resulting in a safety concern for 96th Street. In an effort to protect both the liability of our business and the property, we connected our legal representative. He contacted the Borough of Stone Harbor's attorney, Marcus Caravan, and the city manager, Bob Smith, by phone. He also followed up with a letter that I have attached to this document. Clearly, Councilwoman Rich has no authority in her action, and she placed both our property, business, and potentially employees at risk. I am providing you this information so as to help ensure that this type of incident does not occur again to a residential or commercial property owner.
Mayor, I have something I'd like to read into the record, please. Could you hear me? I can't hear Judy.
Mayor, you're muted. You're muted, Mayor. There you go.
I got, first, I'm going to get a motion, just adding this to the record. So I need a motion making the letter as read a part of the record.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I would like to share this and make it part of the record. I also have received a copy of Mr. Bunting's letter to the mayor, and to say that these allegations are without any basis in truth or reality would be an understatement. The facts surrounding this alleged incident are simple and straightforward. On Friday, May 22nd, a man in a neon green sweatshirt approached me in the coffee talk parking lot and asked me about a car that was legally parked on 97th Street. He never identified himself, nor said what company he was working for. When I advised him it was not my car, he stated, "I have to get that car moved immediately, right now." I identified myself as a member of our council, and I offered to help him. I offered to call the non-emergency borough number for assistance. He said no. He said no, and he walked away. He said that would take too long. He said that he had, excuse me, he said that he had to have that car moved immediately. Contrary to Mr. Bunting's assertions, I never spoke with anyone regarding the work being performed at the Harbor Square Theater, including anybody from Atlantic City Electric. I have been a member of council for many years, and this would be the first time that I've ever been accused of interfering with a local business. I have never done so, nor do I believe I have the power to do so. It is unfortunate that I have been smeared for something which I've had no involvement, and that this letter now has been read into the record during a public hearing. I have never spoke with Mr. Bunting, and I cannot speak to what occurred with Mr. Bunting's business on the 22nd of May. However, his allegations are untrue. I will continue to defend myself against these allegations, and if necessary, take action. I take pride in putting Stone Harbor first when I sit in this seat. Thank you for listening.
Do I, do I have to do anything formal as, like, as I do with regular communications? That's just a part of the record, correct? And will be reflected in a minutes?
It's a part of the record. The acceptance of it into the record does not constitute an acknowledgement by the borough as to the veracity or lack of veracity. It's a communication, it's received, and it's put into the normal record.
Okay, thank you, Marcus. We'll now have public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by raising their hand electronically. If you're on the meeting via video, click on the appropriate location. If you are participating via telephone, please hit star nine. When called upon, you will state your name and address for the record. Please make sure to mute your device after your question is answered. To mute your device, you will need to hit star six. And I'm looking for hands. I am not seeing any.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Bob Rich.
Mr. Rich.
717-309-5302, not sure who it is.
I see, is that the same as Bob? I can't unmute him. I'm trying, and I cannot, perhaps?
I guess, Mayor. 717 is on the line.
Okay.
I believe I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks for the time. Rick Marino, homeowner, 93rd and Sunset. Just a quick question for Mr. Mark de Blasio. Just wanted to confirm that the stormwater pump house is still planned for the original location of 93rd and Third? And second part of that question, expected start date and completion? Pretty excited about having this done, this is great.
Okay, so if the question is that the storms, is the storm sewer pump station still planned to be constructed on the existing location of the sanitary sewer pump station on 93rd Street? That is correct. It is not being installed closer to the bay or in the street end at all.
Thank you. And just an expected start and completion date for this?
So I'm gonna caveat that answer since there's another firm handling that project. I'm gonna say, I believe they're on target to start that project hopefully at some point later this year, early next year. It should be constructed within a year after that.
That's what I call, 2021 through 2022.
Yeah, that's, that's the best of my recollection. But I can tell you with 100% certainty that that pump station is going where we talked about it going. It was not going closer to the bay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Marino. I spoke to him last night, and he had received information from people in the neighborhood that we were placing that pump station at 93rd and Sunset.
Yeah, I, I had saw the email, and it was, I would definitely put that in the category of misinformation.
Yes. So I spoke to him, and I said, "No, that's a rumor, not happening." And then he had said that he would be on the meeting tonight, and I guess he's gonna make sure the mayor knew what she was talking about. Right, Mr. Marino? We had a pleasant conversation last night, he and I. Is there anyone else who would like to address mayor and council?
Bob Rich.
Can you unmute yourself, Bob? I cannot.
There we go.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor or Mrs. Mayor. I am Robert Rich, I live at 10410 Sunset Drive in the Borough of Stone Harbor. I have one or two comments, and then a couple of questions, if I may. First, I applaud the onboarding of Paul as, and I'm sorry, I don't recall or have I heard his last name. As a code official, I think it's a great move. I think they're particularly in, in one industry that I'm somewhat involved with, the use of, the abuse of the signed ordinances has been rampant, and I'm glad to see that Paul has taken charge. And I've already had the pleasure of speaking with him and resolving a couple of matters. My question goes back to outdoor dining, which I'm a fan of, I should begin there. And my question is, are, is ownership and tenancy seen as the same thing with an application for this?
I'm going to assume yes, Ray, coming up?
I, I would say yes, Mayor, that, that it's basically directed, Bob, to the business. So if there is a viable business on site, whether tenant, whether owned by the individual that owns the building and operated, I would say would be seen the same way.
Okay. Secondly, I was, I'm not sure I was clear on the answer. There was some interruption last time between the term alcohol and BYOB. Would you please be clear as to what the intent of the ordinance at hand is with regard to that?
The intent of the ordinance is to allow the BYOBs to, the patrons who come to a BYOB can have, can consume an alcoholic beverage while seated at a table that has an approved permit. As far as what?
Excuse me.
And then as far as what is taking place at the licensed establishments, what is happening there is the ABC has already relaxed their, some of their regulations, and they are now allowing cocktails to go. So what would take place there is you would not have table service coming from the, the actual brick and mortar out to the table. What you would have is the person from the table would have to get up, go in, get a cocktail to go, bring it back to the table, sit down, could then break the seal and consume it.
So just to be clear in my mind, you can or cannot consume spirits at a unlicensed, un-ABC, LCB, whatever you call it, New Jersey?
You're saying like a BYOB?
Yes. BYOB, as I understand it, and here I stand to be corrected, is beer, wine, and malt. It does not include spirits. Maybe Mr. Caravan can comment to that, but I'm not, that's just my understanding, and I want to be clear so that the applicants can be clear.
My understanding, given the relaxation of what is being allowed with this to go, is that alcohol would be defined as alcohol inclusive of spirits. But I would want to look at it and get back with you, Bob, I can't say definitively.
So you could take your, you could take your Bloody Mary or your mimosa to Uncle Bill's in the morning and have that along with your pancakes.
I'm gonna say yes, but I would want to look at it a little more closely.
And my last question, if I may, is when I attended the St. Mary's Episcopal Church, there was a moment when Maribellas wanted to include, I think, local wine in their service. And we, as a congregation, had that brought before us to approve or disapprove. Does the location of the Catholic church have any bearing on any of the, that restaurant row there that has to be taken into consideration?
So I believe that there is an ABC prohibition relative to that that may overlap, and we would have to look at that for properties that would fall within that proximity of a church.
Okay. Hey, thanks a lot.
During the review process.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to address mayor and council?
Mayor, we have Ron Gordeski on the line.
Go ahead, Ron.
Hi, I'm Ron Gordeski. I live at 9501 Sunset, and I'm the Managing Director of the Reeds at Shelter Haven in Stone Harbor. Thank you for considering the sidewalk dining ordinance, which we're very much in favor of and excited about. I did have, I had a couple of questions related to that ordinance, the proposed ordinance. And also, I wanted to also address something Mr. Richard had talked about, or something that, about delivering of wine and spirits. So our establishment has a license which allows, excuse me, for takeout and delivery of alcohol. And when, my understanding is that when the governor allowed us to, through, not just the governor, but the, but the signed legislation allowed us to deliver, you know, mixed cocktails, it's under the same, that's the same part of our license that lets us deliver unopened bottles. So I think that as it relates to a remote location that's not part of our current licensed premises, we can still deliver those cocktails. We'll get clarification from the ABC.
That would be correct, to my understanding, Ron.
Right. But I do have a question. As you know, we, we own a lot right on 96th Street. It was, it's a big empty lot right on the bay. And it's, it's actually our private property, and we're thinking about, since, as you may know, we're, we're not planning on using indoor tables for some time. And we have a lot of indoor tables in addition to outdoor tables. We were considering, you know, actually using that lot for some seating. We were actually gonna consider putting sand on that lot and making it a, kind of a nice entrance into Stone Harbor with, with dining. So I have a couple of questions. One is, since I own that lot, I mean, do I, would I need to basically assemble and break down the tables every day? Because it's not in any right of way. And is there, you know, and as I go through the application, a lot of that really applies to being in the city right of way, or the borough right of way. We're not in any right of way. So we would however have to deliver food through the right of way because we're walking on the sidewalk to do so. So I, I wasn't sure in reading the ordinance how those, those issues are handled.
Though, in the original ordinance, as the planning board was presenting to council, that would not have been something that would have taken place under the ordinance as you're going to see it adopted, hopefully adopted tonight. That being said, we can make amendments to the ordinance via resolution. So one thing we can do, and it actually fits in very well with the time period where the outdoor dining will be approved, is I would submit to council that people in a position such as you or in some kind of a position that is, does not fall within the norms, or the, you know, how this ordinance is originally crafted, or what its intent is, that it's something that Ray Poudria, Police Chief, they take a look at, and if it's something that they see no public safety issues on, we could, in two weeks, we could pass a resolution that allows us to make certain modifications. And since it is by resolution, it is something that would be effective immediately. So that would put it on for the 16th of June, and on the 15th is when the outdoor dining can take place. So that could be, some of those things can be fleshed out in this two-week period. And if we see that there are instances that would require a change, we could do that by resolution and by the majority of council voting affirmatively for that. That being said, as soon as the COVID-19 restrictions are done, so would be, so would that exception to the ordinance.
Of course, yeah. Okay. And what about the use of the, that was in regard to the, to leaving our furniture out on the lot? Is there any issue with our, our use of the borough sidewalk to deliver food and beverage?
Well, it, it seems to me that it's gonna be, anybody who's using the right of way is gonna be traversing the borough sidewalk in some fashion. So, I mean, we, we could theoretically say that somebody's on the sidewalk walking 15 feet, or somebody's on the sidewalk walking three feet. Either way, in the right of way, we're, someone's traversing the sidewalk. Is it something we want to see for good? I would venture no. However, during these times, is it something, if the majority of council says it's relief that would be permitted, then it's something that we could do. Every, there's gonna be, if you're in the right of way, there's some traversing of that sidewalk.
Right. And if I may, on, as we know, on June 15th, we have the governor's permission to open. Is there anything that the borough would like to see from us that shows our compliance with, with, with whatever the guidelines are prior to opening?
I don't, and, and Marcus, please jump in here. I have not seen, in the many executive orders that come out, I have not seen so much, you know, local oversight going in and signing off and giving somebody a permit. It appears the protocols go out, and absent a complaint, no, we're not going in and checking and making sure that they're being done, correct?
I would say that's, that's correct, yes.
I haven't seen any, any?
The protocols are generally the outline.
And there's nothing within the executive orders that state that you gotta then, the municipality has to come in and, you know, make sure and sign off? I've seen nothing like that on any orders.
The executive orders are a work in progress. I would say that thus far, I have not seen that. That does not mean the governor may not devise something like that in one of his future orders. However, at present, I think we're, you're right.
Yes, and yeah, true, because I keep waiting for this order. This order has yet to come out with what those guidelines are gonna be. So it was, it was stated in the press conference yesterday, but the order itself has not come out.
Okay. Thank you very much, and wanted to voice our strong support for, for the ordinance as well. And it's important to us that, that our hotel guests have many options in the borough. We're hearing from our guests. One of the, one of the hesitations they have in coming, if they have hesitation, is they want to make sure the borough is open. They love coming to Stone Harbor, they want to be in the community. So I really, I... So I really, I really want to back this ordinance. I think it's a very important thing for the borough.
Thank you, Ron. Is there anyone else who would like to address Mayor and Council?
I have Spia Gata.
Go ahead, sir.
Hello, this is Marco Tarantino. I own Spia Geta right on 98 and 3rd. Thank you very much for you guys doing, it's fantastic job, and definitely something that the borough needs, and not just my restaurant, but everybody there in Stone Harbor. Couple of questions. I didn't read the ordinance, but when we say, you know, my restaurant is right on the corner, so I'm lucky enough to have two sides of Street 98 and 3rd both. And I also own Stone Harbor Panini Company right next to it, so I can definitely use a lot of table there. I'm very happy about that. Technical question, when we have these ordinance issued, and we have to consider, there are option for umbrella, for instance, for partitions. Because, you know, partition, that can be something like fencing, or something that can be bases, all different, you know, we have to make something, not just throw a cup of table in the street and tell people, hey, come over and eat. I mean, we have to create some sort of ambience in the reflective restaurants. So I'm looking into the details of this ordinance for upgrading, if you want to call it, the outdoor dining. And the other question that I have is, my understanding is now we are not be able to open outside, I mean, inside, until we got the ordinance and from the governor. Now, having dinner outside, if we don't have these open container ordinance ready, will mean that I'm going to tell the people, hey, you can sit down, but can't consume alcohol? Is that correct? Is my understanding? And the last thing that I want to just, and then I'll let you.
How about if we answer one or two of these?
One at a time, okay.
Before you ask anyone. Okay, so as to your first question, with regard to the partitions, the ambience, the roping, whatever you want to do, that would be something that you would sit down with Mr. Poudria on an item-by-item basis and address, see if you can come up with a mutually agreeable plan that would work within the guidelines of the ordinance and would give you the ambience you want. Secondly, with regard to the open display ordinance, when we adopted on second reading today, or when, is it, once it's adopted on second reading, borough is going to treat it as a fair comply and let you move ahead with your outdoor dining and having people sit down at the tables and consuming alcohol. So we're going to look at that as an expedited approval of that.
Thank you, that answered the question. My last observation, it was being brought up a couple of times, putting the table inside at night, it's very cumbersome. Table are no easy to move, chair, okay, that can be put away. What it means, we have to cover with some sort of, you know, covers or something like that. What it means, not visible to the, to the, to the public.
So this is somewhat of a work in progress. I am going to let you sit down with Mr. Poudria when you do, and see if you can work out a reasonable solution to that, predicated upon your individual needs and the number of tables you have. And let's see where we go from there.
If I could jump in here.
Yeah.
Jump in here real quick on that question, because I think it bears some further explanation or consideration. And my understanding was that tables, to the extent that they remain within the property, but not in the borough right of way, would be on property, and therefore they are concealed. However, if they are in the borough right of way, they must be removed. I think that's a distinction.
Is that a distinction that is made in the ordinance?
I don't think the distinction is made in the ordinance. However, I don't know that we can legislate what people keep on their private property. Is that correct, Mr. Caravan?
I would say that that is correct. I don't believe there is a distinction in the ordinance, however. As I said, it will, it will be somewhat of a case-by-case basis, and I would allow the individual restaurateurs that are looking to get this approval to sit down with Ray. I'm happy to weigh in on that, to see how we can make this functional. I understand the pragmatic, the practical problems you're going to have moving large tables around at the end of the night. So let's do our best to come up with a workable solution.
Now, the last question is not really, but now this table, this ordinance would allow us to put table outside. Now, that would be six feet apart, four people maximum per table? I mean, what's the requirement? Do they have to be all table for two?
It's specified in the ordinance. It's not limited to tables of two. There are distances laid out. There are seating requirements laid out.
And we're waiting on those guidelines from the governor, and we will say, is there a maximum-sized table? I would anticipate, but I don't know this for a fact, just because it's what's happening in other states, that there will be some indoor dining permitted, maybe 25% of your capacity may remain indoors. That's what I would anticipate. There's something, but I don't know that for a fact.
Mayor, originally, when he rolled out Phase Two, it was contemplated that there would be some indoor dining simultaneous with outdoor dining. On this latest listing of Phase Two, that really wasn't included. So I don't know what is on the governor's mind, as many of us are wondering what's on the governor's mind. So we will see as it unfolds. And in a way, we are, it's a work in progress, because if his executive order that ultimately allows the dining is somewhat more restrictive than the ordinance, then we have to modify. If it's less restrictive, then I'm sure we can accommodate that.
Okay.
Thank you very much for whatever you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Marco. Is there anyone else who would like to address Mayor and Council?
Maggie Day.
Go ahead, Maggie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to thank you all very much for considering our application for the outdoor retail sales, specifically tonight, and also the outdoor dining. I want to, again, just put our support in from the chamber's perspective. This is, the outdoor retail sales for nonessential businesses would be very huge, and a step in the right direction for them to at least open their doors and start selling some of the things that they've possibly had shipped to them back in February, March, in their planning of opening, and then only to see that they had to close their doors. So if they could start selling those goods in any way possible, which this is a creative, of course, way of doing that for those, for these 12 days, it would just be a huge bridge to gap, you know, a huge bridge in that gap of time between now and on the 15th, when they are allowed to open. And I do believe that without, without the food on the sidewalk, and without the essential businesses on the sidewalk, and in the manner that we are saying, you know, let's set up next to the building, it would really provide, it would provide a win-win for all. We would still be able to do social distancing, you know, in the requirement of the masks, we'd still be able to adhere to all of the health and safety requirements of the CDC, but it would allow our businesses to get some income generating, and that is what they have been waiting for, for a very long time. So I thank you and ask you to please support the outdoor retail sales and the outdoor dining tonight.
Thank you, Maggie. Is there anyone else who would like to address Mayor and Council?
Judy?
Yes, who is that?
How you doing? It's Brett Enough. I'm sorry, Mayor, I just got on.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Brett.
I didn't hear, I heard some things from some other people that was addressed to Council, what happened at the movie theater with Atlantic City Electric. And I just would like to address a couple of things about that, if I could, please.
Okay.
So that day, I was called by higher power, called me and told me that there was a councilwoman who told Atlantic City Electric that they weren't allowed to be there because they were blocking traffic, and they had to leave. At that time, I ran over to Stone Harbor to find out what was going on. I was on my way there, and I was told, I found out who the councilwoman was, and everybody knows, there's a letter that's out, that the councilwoman was Josie Rich, that told Atlantic City Electric they cannot be here. At that time, I got to Atlantic, I got to the Stone Harbor, I, I reached out to you, Mayor, I reached out to some other, the police department, other people in the city, to find out what's going on. Ray Poudia came by, also with the couple, the police also came by to tell us that we were allowed to do this and get the electric back on, because it was a safety hazard in the building. We were very concerned that there was no fire suppression system in the building. We didn't want the building to burn down. We didn't want to have a fire. We didn't have, we didn't want to have a safety issue. And also, as everybody knows, the marquee was black for the entire weekend of Memorial Day weekend. We were trying to get Atlantic City Electric to come back out, but it was too late. So I was just told by somebody, that someone said that, that someone approached her about moving cars. Yes, there are cars that had to be moved, but nobody had the right to tell Atlantic City Electric that they cannot be there. To me, the only person should have the right is the code enforcement, or the police should be telling Atlantic City Electric that, not somebody on council. I think that was, wasn't the right thing to do, and it caused a lot of problems. So I just want to put that on the record, that that's how it went down, and we also have witnesses that day how it went down. And that's the reason why we put the letter out, more again, to protect us if there was a problem that weekend in the theater, if it did burn down, because there was no fire alarm system and no fire suppression system in the building. So the building was, was pretty much unsafe for that entire weekend. And that's about it.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Brett.
Yes, yes, Mayor, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address Mayor and Council? I'm seeing Brian P. Could someone, I cannot unmute you. Can you unmute yourself? There you go.
Okay, great. Quick question for you in regards, I deal with the same thing, being on a corner there at Fishing Pier. We have a question as regards to the curb. Did the bill, tables actually have to be up against the building, or can they be out towards the yellow curb? And will any of the benches ever be removed in order to accommodate tables? Our concern is that sidewalk there, and all of a sudden, this year, a big, they're beautiful, the flower circular things that we love all over the town, never had it in four years, showed up on the corner just this year, where we had hoped to put a table perhaps, but now that's there. So I guess our concern is, looking with Ray, is anything like that going to be moved? Or in the ordinance, it sounds like the light fixtures, the speed limit signs, that's all permanent. But are they considering moving any of those benches at all to accommodate tables for people?
I would, again, I think Ray will be meeting with the, with you all, and he'll also be looking at case-by-case basis. Not my decision to make alone, but however, if it appears that the removal and the temporary storage of a bench here or there is something that would be advantageous to different restaurants, and if we're, if we're fair across the board, and again, keeping in mind that whatever we do this summer may not necessarily, but what you will see next summer, I would venture that it's something that can be discussed on an individual basis. I would defer to the rest of Council to weigh in, if it's something that, that we could. Somebody said in the last meeting, it's four bolts. I don't know if that's true, but.
It is.
It is certainly something that, on a case-by-case basis, I would support removing them on a case-by-case basis with an application that Mr. Poudria has approved, and, you know, also with the understanding that things we do this year may not continue into next summer. And as far as your other questions, like where can you place your tables, and so on and so forth, a lot of these things will become clearer when Mr. Poudria meets with you folks, and you can get into particulars about how that's going to happen in particular businesses.
Okay, great. And that will be notified through the chamber of when that Zoom meeting will be?
I would imagine, yes, yes. And I think it's probably in our best interest, I don't know how long we want to wait, but I think it might be in our best interest to get that executive order and the protocols first, because we don't know what. And hopefully, that's going to be relatively soon. I mean, this has been 24 hours, and that's actually long to be waiting for the executive order following the announcement. So hopefully, we're going to get something very soon. I check probably every 10 minutes. I'm going to check right now, I'll tell you if it's out yet.
I just did, Madam Mayor, it's not.
It is not out. I keep checking to see if it's an updated list. It's not out yet. And as soon as it is, and I check all the time, I will immediately let Maggie Day know, so she can see it gets distributed, and Mr. Poudria will be on top of it, I'm sure, and then we can start getting some concrete answers.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who would like to address Mayor and Council? I'm not seeing anyone. Jen Gensimer, are you?
I don't see anyone, Madam Mayor.
Okay. With that, I am going to close public comment. Ordinance 1568.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1568 amended, adding while seated, be taken up on second, third, and final reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1568 on second reading?
Ordinance of the Borough of Stone Harbor, County of Cape May, New Jersey, establishing the regulations and process for obtaining an outdoor dining license with the Borough of Stone Harbor.
The public hearing on ordinance 1568 is open. Seeing no one who wishes to make comment, I will close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1568 be passed on second reading and advance to third and final reading.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Abstain. Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1568 on third and final reading?
An ordinance of the Borough of Stone Harbor, County of Cape May, New Jersey, establishing the regulations and process for obtaining an outdoor dining license within the Borough of Stone Harbor.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1568 be passed on third and final reading, adopted, adopted and published according to law.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Abstain.
Resolution 2020 S. 117.
Mayor and Council, I offer resolution 2020 dash S. dash 117 for adoption.
Second.
This is to put into effect the shared services agreement with Avalon on the Chief Financial Officer for the next three years.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 S. 118.
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer resolution 2020 dash S. dash 118 for adoption.
Second.
This resolution involves a duplicate tax payment in the amount of $1,709.97 to be refunded to Mr. and Mrs. to be refunded to Mr. and Mrs. Delone, who reside at 376 93rd Street.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 S-119.
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer resolution 2020 dash S dash 119. It's a resolution authorizing a shared services agreement by and between the city of North Wildwood and the Borough of Stone Harbor for uniform construction code inspections in instances of conflicts of interest.
In a second.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
We have discussion, Mayor?
Oh, yes.
I, I just want to say, I'm, I'm going to vote negative on, on this, and I just want you to understand my reasoning. You know, I, I believe that the borough has, uh, professional, uh, people like Ray Poudri and Paul, who I haven't really met yet, and several others who can enforce our ordinances and codes. I don't understand why we have to go to third parties, uh, and bring in outside people to enforce Stone Harbor ordinances. I understand the concept behind the conflict of interest. I just, you know, and I'll give you an example. If, if, um, if Chief Shuttah found me going 40 miles an hour down Third Avenue, I certainly would expect to get a ticket from him, and I'm sure he would oblige. And I don't believe anybody in, in town, whether it be a restauranteur, or a shopkeeper, or a builder, or whatever, would expect any preferential treatment, uh, from our people. So I just, I just don't think it's a necessary way to go.
So the thinking, Mayor, of course, is that in accordance with best practices and ethical guidelines, um, and, and without making any implication on the character of any of our council members or any of the individuals that would be enforcing this, the thinking is that it is a better practice to allow individuals who are independent, uh, to make a judgment and assessment on the permitting process, and they would be individuals who their job or approval or contract is not voted upon by any of the council members. That's the, that's the intent of this.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Any more discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Oh.
I'm sorry?
No.
Mr. Get, Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
No.
Mrs. Rich?
Resolution 2020 S-120.
Madam Mayor and Council, uh, I offer resolution 2020 dash S dash 120. It is the farmers markets dates and fees. We're very excited to look forward to the farmers market on June 21st.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 S-121.
Mayor and Council, I offer resolution 2020 dash S dash 121 for the refund of the fire inspection fee to the, um, Needles family of 8533, I'm sorry, 8525 Sunset Drive. They no longer, um, are renting their property, so they'd like the fee returned.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 S-123.
I'd like to offer 2020, um, S-120, did you say three or two?
Uh, did I skip one?
Yes.
Okay, 122.
I'd like to offer resolution 2020 dash S-122 for adoption. This is a refund that we are doing for our craft show, um, and this is giving the tourism director, um, the, the list of the, which totals $14,600 that is going to have to be returned to the vendors of our show for this year.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 S-124.
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer resolution 2020 dash S dash 124. It is a resolution, uh, welcoming back Nick Elizano's Stone Harbor Boot Camp and a return to normalcy this weekend. We're all looking forward to it.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Did I skip 123?
Yes, Mayor.
Resolution 2020 S-123.
I'd like to offer resolution 2020 dash S-123 for adoption.
Second.
Just to refund a boat slip fee in the amount of, I believe, $1,500.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
So we're going to need a motion for the special events application that has been submitted by the Chamber of Commerce, and do we, if that motion is, is, um, moved to include those who are not chamber members, however, they must provide proof of insurance, naming the Borough of Stone Harbor as an additional insured. Is that how we want that motion to proceed? So here's how I'll create, that's the way I will ask for the motion. So we need a motion authorizing the special events application and providing that same relief for those non-essential businesses who are not members of the chamber, provided they get the necessary insurance for that time period, naming the Borough of Stone Harbor as an additional insured.
So move.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain?
Judy, I think you want to have the
I don't know what emotion, if, can you abstain on emotion, or is it an irnae?
It's a y or a n, but you may, i-if you choose to abstain, you may.
Just for clarification, what does abstain mean? Don't you have to have a conflict of interest to abstain?
Judy, that's why I'm abstaining. I have a conflict of interest with my family.
My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Caravan, is that when you have a conflict, you must abstain when you feel that you cannot vote without letting that conflict interfere with your ability to judge independently on the merits, correct?
So when you have a conflict, you must abstain if you believe that your conflict is affecting your perception with regard to the voting, and that must be reasonably objectively based. Now, in, in this instance, um, if Councilwoman Rich has a conflict, she can absolutely abstain.
To repeat it, I have daughters in business.
Mayor, I, did, do you want to add that the fee will be waived also?
Oh, yes, yes. Thank you for the reminder. Um, do I need to call on a second vote for that? Let's make sure. Okay. Just to make sure, so let's move it based on, um, what we just introduced, also with the addition that all fees associated with that special event are waived, including to those who are not members of the chamber. Clerk, call the roll. No? Are we moving it first?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Seeing no items of discussion on the agenda, I will, um, bring counsel and the public up to speed on some of the things that have transpired in the last two weeks, and then we will hear from the OEM director, and then if the chief of police has gotten on to the meeting, he was out, we can ask him, uh, Mr. Dahlahan's question for that update on Ocean City. So, um, as always, I want to start with thanking our borough employees for working through yet another two weeks under unprecedented conditions. We're experiencing personnel challenges or personnel changes, along with carrying out the daily mission of conducting the business of the borough. Not an easy task, and one that puts increased pressure on our employees. I'm proud of how they're all stepping up to that challenge every day. I'm going to reiterate what Mr. Parzic said. In the last couple of days, we have asked our residents, visitors, and business owners to be patient with our Department of Public Works as they face challenges filling seasonal positions and keeping up with not only the increased workload that accompanies increased occupancy in town, but also the challenges associated with incorporating COVID-19 restrictions along with their daily tasks. We are all aware that trash collection is a struggle right now. The Director of Public Works is confident this issue will be addressed quickly, hopefully within a week or so. A special thanks to our public safety employees and department heads. Again, I could not be more thankful for the dedication and professionalism of our public safety team. Last night, several of our officers were in Rio Grande alongside the Middletownship Police Department with a demonstration in the name of George Floyd. The demonstration was peaceful, respectful, and showed the power of community. As we all continue to struggle with what is happening in our country, we can find comfort in the fact that merely looking a few miles to the west, we saw our neighbors acknowledge the issues of racial divide and inequality in a matter that with commitment will result in change and progress. This county is very fortunate that the chief of Middletownship Police Department, Christopher Loosner, is also the president of the New Jersey State Chiefs of Police Association. His leadership and representation of Cape May County has been remarkable, not only last night, but throughout this pandemic. Memorial Day is behind us. I know it was not easy for our businesses. Not easy to endure that holiday weekend under these state-imposed restrictions, and we all, Mayor and Council, thank the business community for their cooperation. Could not have been easy for you. Hopefully, the approval of the special event application tonight provides some relief in between now and June 15th, the day you can finally open your brick and mortar stores to the public. Borough Hall opens yesterday, June 1st, to the public with COVID-19 restrictions. Business can be conducted within Borough Hall. However, an appointment is required. The front door will remain locked. All those entering Borough Hall must wear a face covering. The details of how to make an appointment and other COVID-19 restrictions can be found on our website. Beach Patrol Captain Sandy Bisacco advised me today that everything has been going well on the beach since they were opened on Friday, May 22nd. Everyone is being respectful, practicing social distancing both in the water and on the sand. And here's some good news, we are better staffed this year at this particular time leading into summer than prior years, as guards who usually would be in school are now available. As a result, all of our dedicated, protected beaches are open. And also, this is making it easier to meet that capacity management and keep people spread out. The pavilions at 88th, 95th, and 101st Street have been opened to allow for handicapped access. Beach tag sales are down significantly. Last year through May 31st, revenue from tag sales totaled $555,100. This year through May 31st, sales total $243,316. The difference is a total of $311,794. One thing is, we can think from May 31st, 2019, the cost of the tag would go up June 1st, so people were quick to run and get them by June 1st. The tag sales are day by day higher revenues than last year, day by day. So perhaps in the next month, we'll see some more catching up there. At the Recreation Department, pickleball and tennis started yesterday. Based on the report I received from our Recreation Director, Tina Prickett, it went well. 20 courts were reserved throughout the day, accommodating 44 pickleball players and 20 tennis players. So people are out, and they're happy. The courts were staffed 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at both 96th Street and 82nd Street. Reservations are required for all time slots. Details on how to make your reservations and the protocols for engaging in safe play can be found on the Recreation website. It's an easy one to remember, stoneharborrecreation.com. The Recreation Director also shared some good news that the borough was, it was a surprise, is a recipient of a $3,000 USTA recovery grant to help defray the costs of reopening and operating our facility under COVID-19 protocols. As we, we just approved the EUS, and as Jen Gensimer said, bootcamp classes begin this Saturday, June 5th, and will continue Saturdays, Sundays, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Reservations and prepayment are required. Class sizes are limited to under 25. So two classes will be offered, 8:00 to 8:45 AM, and 9:00 AM to 9:45. This can all be done contactless on a fitness app called MindBody. Regulars of this very popular class will see changes to keep you safe. However, it remains the quality class that participations, that participants have grown to love. As other classes begin at the Recreation Department, the Recreation Director is working with vendors to make sure protocols in place. We will let the public know. The indoor facilities remain closed. Only outdoor activities are permitted at this time. Executive Order 149 issued on May 30th permits youth camps to begin on July 6th. The Recreation Department will be fine tuning our programs to comply with protocols and restrictions. Once that is in place, those registrations can begin. Please keep checking back with the Recreation website for updates and requirements. As everyone is aware by now, last Tuesday, May 26th, the Cape May County Freeholder Board modified their resolution addressing short-term rentals. As you remember, that resolution permitted short-term rentals and hotels and motels to operate at 60% capacity beginning June 1st. The change allowed for the start to move from June 1st to May 27th. This was in time for our local hotels and motels to pick up a couple additional reservations. We got good news this morning on the weekly conference call of the Cape May County Coronavirus Task Force. Hospitalizations of COVID-19 patients throughout the state are down, including at Cape Regional. Presently, there are 14 patients in Cape Regional being treated for the virus. Cape May County is averaging seven new cases per day, the lowest number in the state. Stone Harbor to date has one case since this has begun. Countywide, there has been 638. Hospital personnel on the call advised that the number of overall patients treated for various illnesses, injuries over Memorial Day weekend was below average compared to the past. As most of you are aware, just yesterday, the governor authorized the opening of non-essential retail business and outdoor dining beginning June of non-essential retail business and outdoor dining beginning June 15th, a light at the end of the tunnel. We are awaiting the actual executive order, so businesses will know what protocols to put in place. We're doing our very best to keep our website and our frequently asked questions current. Jenny Olson, Director of Tourism and Public Information, is working seven days a week to get information out as quickly as it comes in. And as everyone is aware, this situation changes daily and changes quickly. I'm hopeful that once businesses open and restaurants resume onsite dining, we can all settle in and start to enjoy a summer. Please be kind and respectful of everyone you encounter. Always have a face covering with you, and be ready to wear it when you are unable to achieve the recommended six-foot distance. When the stores do open, you will be required to wear a mask inside to shop. So put that mask on and shop local. Our business community needs us. With that, OEM Coordinator JT Jonathan Lacoste, is there anything you'd like to add?
Thank you very much, mayor and council. Yes, we are anxiously awaiting Executive Order Number 150. I have it on my split screen here, and it still hasn't come out. I assume it's going to be lengthy, very detailed. This is, I believe, about as long as it's ever taken for one of these to come out. But I just want everybody to know that when these do come out, we read them at length, and we go over them with a fine-tooth comb. We would like to afford our businesses owner every opportunity to be open whenever we can. And I think that passing this resolution to allow for the two weeks of outside sales is a great step and a great lifeline to the businesses. Other than that, to just shift gears a little bit, we do have a tropical storm that's heating up down in the Gulf. We'll be heading north. Looks like right now, it's going to be headed to the Louisiana area, but should probably bring us rain in the very far away, 10 days or so. Nothing to be concerned about, but we are actively monitoring those situations as well as the COVID situation. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, thank you. Chief Shudder? We just, Mr. Dahlahan had asked during the work session if we could hear from you concerning what took place in Ocean City earlier today?
Yes, mayor, I'd spoken with him yesterday. He just asked me to pass along a few comments about things that have occurred, you know, that everyone is well aware of. I just want to start by saying, I understand the fear and anxiety that some of our residents and businesses might have due to the current events that have recently occurred around the state and the nation. With that, I'd like to assure everyone that the Police Department does have an operational response plan for these type of events, and that the plan basically mirrors that of what was implemented successfully yesterday in Middletownship and today in Ocean City. I don't want to go into specifics of the plan for security reasons, but depending on the nature and circumstance of the incident, we would partner with additional law enforcement agencies in Cape May County, the Cape May County Prosecutor's Office, New Jersey State Police Rock, in order to ensure the safety and security of everyone that's involved, as well as safeguarding the rights of all people to peacefully assemble. That's very important. As always, I ask that if you see something or hear something that is concerning to you, we urge you to call the Police Department immediately, so we may conduct a proper investigation and drill down on what the nature of the circumstance or incident is. In terms of Ocean City, mayor, I think you had referenced it earlier before. We were in Rio Grande last night with Middletownship and a host of police officers from around the county. That was obviously, as I said before, very successful. Chief Loosner and his team did a fantastic job. We were also up in Ocean City today. Basically, the same playbook up in Ocean City. They had an estimated 600 to 750 demonstrators in front of the Police Department. At the end of the day, everything was peaceful and successful, and that's really what it's all about. And, you know, we basically have, all the police departments kind of mirror each other in their plans, and we partner together, because we all have the same goal in mind of safety and security, and again, to make sure that people can assemble peacefully, as is their right. So that's pretty much all I have in terms of the protests and demonstrations, unless there's further questions.
Thank you, chief. May I have a motion approving the bills?
So moved.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
Sorry, I was having trouble with my sound there. I move that we approve the bill list and authorize the CFO to pay the bills when the funds are available and the vouchers properly endorsed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will now have another public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time, but.
But by way of public interest, I've just received a correspondence from Congressman Van Drew to Governor Murphy dated today's date, urging the governor to set forth exact timelines for the reopening of South Jersey. I'm going to forward it to Mr. Smith, so he can post it on the borough website.
Thank you, Mark. So now we'll move on to public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by raising their hand electronically. If you're on the meeting via video, click on the appropriate location. If you are participating via telephone, please hit star nine. When called upon, you will state your name and address for the record. Please make sure to mute your device after your question is answered. To mute your device, you will need to hit star six. Is there anyone out there who would like to address mayor and council? I am not seeing anyone. I'll keep flipping through it. Might have seen someone.
Maggie Day.
Okay. Go ahead, Maggie, please.
I just wanted to real quick thank mayor and council and JT Lacoste for all of your help in passing the outdoor retail and the outdoor dining. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maggie. Thank you for working so hard and advocating for all those businesses. It's been a particularly tough time and a particular struggle, and I know that you are living, breathing, eating this 24/7, and your hard work is appreciated by a lot of people. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address mayor and council? Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. And I need a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I motion to adjourn the meeting.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Stay safe, everyone.